Good evening. I'd like to call it to order the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. First item on the agenda is roll call. And Linda, I believe you're going to help us out with that this evening?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Bollinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair, Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
Patricia Clay.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from May second, two thousand and twenty-four. Has any member had an opportunity to review the minutes of our last meeting and is willing to make a motion for acceptance or acceptance with amendment? Mr. Hirsch, please.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Hirsch to approve minutes from May second. Is there a second on that? Mr. Green, thank you. Any further discussion? Put that to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to. I was not here for that meeting yet.
So that would be one abstention?
Yes.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Alderman. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, communications. Linda or Scott, anything to add this evening?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chair and fellow members of the planning board, there are two new communications that have come in. One is dated May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for twenty-four A Broad Street, and that's a conditional use permit criteria. And there's also email to Linda McGee for twenty-four A Broad Street, engineering comments and responses from the applicant that were received this week regarding twenty-four A Broad Street. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, report of chair, committee, and liaison. I know Ms. Harper isn't here, obviously, this evening, but any anything else to report out? Any other members of the board? No, seeing none. All right. Moving along, we will head into our executive session. Before doing so, I would like to read the planning board procedure for the record. The procedure of the meeting and hearing are as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional use, conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given the time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff. The board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and the chair shall have the availability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you have regarding the plan. Next testimony will will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will begin the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances. Thank you for your, pardon me, thank you for your interest and your courteous attention, and I kindly request that you please silent or mute your cell phones at this time. Before moving on to the first case, I, just for the benefit of everyone in the audience, there are a number of cases on the agenda this evening which have either been tabled to a date certain or asked for continuance. If anyone is in the audience, for any of the cases related to the Mohawk Tannery, cases eight twenty-three, zero six-six through zero six-nine, those cases have been tabled till June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And if anyone is here for the case related to the property at one fifteen Northeastern Boulevard, there were two cases, eight twenty-four, zero zero three-seven, and zero zero three-eight. Those have been postponed till June sixth. So if anyone is here for those, they will be heard at a later date. Moving along to our first or first item on the agenda, old business conditional use permits, case number eight twenty-four dash zero zero four-one, property located at twenty-four A Broad Street. This case was initially heard at our hearing two weeks ago, and they're back again this evening. And I guess is any member of the board prepared to reopen the public hearing and willing to make a motion to do so on this case? Mr. Varley, thank you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would make a motion to reopen the hearing as to case eight twenty-four dash zero zero four-one.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second on the matter? Mr. Hirsch, is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Maybe just by way of background, there were a number of questions raised at the last hearing. We had requested some supplemental information, and obviously, the applicant is here this evening to, I imagine, speak to those points. So I think with that said, we'll certainly turn the floor over to you. So kind of the same process as last time, just come up to the podium, just state your name and address for the record. So, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Cliff Holzel of Three Bow Site Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Michelle Markopolis, Three Bow Site Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire.
So first, we'd like to start. There was actually a letter from Mr. Mark Saunders, deputy city engineer, that had some questions, concerns, comments, and we actually had replied back to them. I just wanted to see if everybody had received those, the comments as well as the replies. Is it, is...
I know we saw Mr. Saunders' letter, but I don't, Linda or Scott correct me if I'm wrong, was was there a response included?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, last night, I sent out the engineering letter and the comments from the applicant as well. It's about about seven last night.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Yes, so received. Thank you.
Very good. So obviously, we just wanted to start. I know that it was Mr. Hudson's, one of his concerns, obviously, as well, was in regards to, you know, the traffic pattern in regards to that, as well as making sure there would be ample parking. And then that was on the the new site plan in regards to that, to be able to show four parking spots as well as one additional for handicap. And then afterwards, still allowing the fenced-in area to be attached to the building, which is the priority, obviously, for the safety of of the animals. So. I don't know. Mr. Chair, is it, would you like us to go down each one so that everyone's familiar with with these pieces? Or would you like to leave it open for questions at this point in time?
I think maybe if you wanted to take a few moments to to maybe just go through the comments that were brought up last time, I think there were some bigger picture items that it might be helpful for the board to hear it visually, or to hear, you know, from you first, and then if there's obviously follow-up questions, the board will have that opportunity.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. More than happy to do so. So so we'll we'll actually start off with, again, these these questions, concerns, comment was from Mr. Mark, is it pronounced Saunders? Is that correct?
Yes.
The first one was, the submitted marked-up site plan showing a proposed fence, traffic, circulation pattern, the parking is illegible. These proposed changes should be clearly submitted on a site plan and at scale, which we were happy to do so. We actually had somebody do that for us. Three D, three D line, true line imaging handled that engineering piece for us in order to provide that for everybody, to make sure everything was to scale properly. Number two, it appears that the proposed parking in the back of the lot where the an existing detonation area, any increase in impervious area requirement in storm water management report. We're not looking to extend out any parking area, not any parking, any pavement area. We're looking to try to keep everything existing the way that it currently is. Only there's no impervious areas and no storm water report is needed and necessary. All right. No. Number three, it was from the planning board meeting on May second, which was two weeks ago, it was stated that there would be turf installed inside the proposed fence, and then it was asked how the turf would actually be installed. It's actually set up that it's going to be, it is installed professionally. It is a two-piece. There's an interlocking system, which to be able to help for the tile system, and then afterwards the turf itself on top of that. It raises a turf off the pavement, and then that way there is actually no runoff. And then afterwards, there is also an attachment of a picture of the interlocking tile system for reference as well. Comment number four, the current screened area refuse storage appears to be obstructed. The proposed circulation pattern, where would the new refuse storage be located and how would it be screened? And it's actually, there is, there's no longer a screened-in area currently for refuse. The garbage bins would be stored in the fenced area, and the garbage bins would actually be brought to the city dump personally. So we would actually set that up to do that. And then afterwards, oh, that was in regards to, it was a combination. So I'll go back to that piece. Number five, traffic before it was not provided by the applicant for proposed change use. It was actually stated, the eighth edition of the trip generation manual is published by the Institute of Transportation of Engineers. And then afterwards, so Michelle had spoke with Wayne's husband back on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and when he had requested details about the building, and Michelle emailed this information to him that day, April fourth, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-four, we did not hear back from him. But to to help with in regards, because this was also.
Child daycare.
It was also a child daycare prior to what it is now. And so so basically, but we're hoping that the impact is to be is less or than than what it even was back then as a child daycare facility. And then currently, right now, typically, dog drop-offs are between seven AM and eleven AM, and then pickups are between three and seven, which means that it's basically staggered. So you're not going to have twenty people showing up all at once in order to do so. And then with the round of about turn as well, just like you would at Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's drive-through, they would be able to. So they would be off the street. There is no traffic impact in regards to that to to help keep that down, because it is a busy road, for sure. So. Comment six, is there expected to be sufficient employee and customer parking? It was on the site plan, as addressed earlier in question one, four parking spaces and one additional five total, with one of them being a handicap parking space. Refuse pickup will remain private as stated nine. I think that was more or less to, as a reminder. This was actually dated for February eleventh, nineteen eighty-three, so it was brought to our attention, and as mentioned, that we would be bringing the garbage to the dump ourselves. And then last, it was, I think it was more or less letting us know about the current sewer system, because it is original structure, and and it was, it was important for us to be aware of that, that that is our responsibility, and and so forth. So it was super important to bring that to our intention, actually, so that we were aware of those situations. So. Yeah. I think one of the other pieces that that we would like to also mention is that we know that the Foleys had some concerns as well. And I, it was actually really important that they had mentioned some of those pieces last, at the last meeting, because obviously, they had mentioned the words kennels and so forth. And and we're not a kennel. We're actually, so it's really important that they are familiar with that, just for the peace of of mind, knowing the fact that there aren't going to be dogs outside barking at all hours of the night and so forth. And unlike some other dog facilities, we actually will be having it manned twenty-four seven, so there will be somebody on site in order to do so. So so it's not just a camera saying that it's being monitored. It's actually monitored by a person so that if there was, you know.
Carl, when dogs are barking, make sure we stop it.
Exactly. There's somebody on premise in order to make sure that the dogs are maintained and taken care of appropriately, and not just barking until all hours of the night. So. And we would also be more than happy to provide our cell, personal cell phones versus a business, so that if there was any questions, concerns, they could more than happy reach out. We do want to be good neighbors for everybody, so it's, it's, it's being respectful for everybody and making sure that everyone's concerns are taken care of appropriately. I would rather know that I, that somebody can be contacted directly than just saying, sorry, you're out of luck. So we just try to do the right thing.
I think that was all of the other. Did you care to elaborate a little bit more on on the business plan, some of the discussion that were, I appreciate, thank you for the explanation on the engineering components, but.
Sure, thank you.
I think there were some questions our last hearing about hours of operation.
I know that this is.
Number of.
You put a lot of time and effort into this.
Dogs at the facility. You know, I probably, I didn't mean to put you in a position where you're reading it verbatim, but, you know, I obviously, you were at the last hearing. If you kind of wanted to give us some high-level points of.
Sure.
What what is current or what may have changed since your your last testimony, so.
Hours of operation, that was a question. I know we did discuss it, but I put it back in this business plan. So it would be for the daycare piece, it would be Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven AM to seven PM. And like Cliff mentioned, the pickup and drop-offs are all staggered, so it's not twenty people being there all at seven o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock at night. Staggered schedule, yep. I just gave some examples, like Fido's mom gets there at seven, she works in Boston, she doesn't get there till three thirty, four o'clock. It just stagger times for the drop-off and pickups. And the boarding hours, obviously, when you vacation, you don't vacation Monday through Friday, so it would be seven days a week, but.
There's something there.
But there's, there's peak times, too. Like, obviously, summertime is busier, and there's a lot of other times that are quiet, where people don't vacation. So when I went through the the calendar and the breakdown, the busiest times, obviously, school vacations, spring breaks, and major holidays, but that only really comes about twelve weeks out of an entire year for boarding. I mean, I'm just talking busiest times, not that we would never have some boarding dogs. I think we mentioned in the last meeting that if there were three or four dogs boarding, we would just take them home overnight, you know. Obviously, if there was fifteen dogs boarding, we would stay on the premise with the dogs overnight. We mentioned the no bark policy. It sounds a little silly that, you know, dogs can't bark, but we're not saying they can't bark, but we're just saying that we're going to keep it respectful, reasonable, and the dogs are always monitored twenty-four seven. And again, like Cliff mentioned, we want to be good neighbors, and if anyone had a concern, they could walk over, they could call, they could email us. We just want that open communication and be respectful and not cause any trouble for anybody. So we respect their concerns, but we are good people, we have integrity, and we will do the right thing. But we do want them to know that we would be open to talking and communicating. So the no bark policy basically is, any dogs that bark excessively will be dismissed from the daycare. It just won't be allowed. We would be assessing dogs and their temperaments before they even would be accepted into the facility. So there's a process for that. Just trying to see. The waste management plan, I know we did, we did talk about it at the last meeting. You know, feces will be picked up immediately, both inside and outside the facility. We are going to use, like Cliff mentioned, the barrel is going to be inside the fenced area, and we will dispose of the feces in the barrel, and actually the diaper genie, which kind of keeps the smell and everything contained, and then disposed of. We would bring it to the dump. What else? And then the, I don't think I'm even saying it right, wishy-wash. I know that Chewie's Playland uses the same product to clean their artificial turf, along with, Zumies also use, it's very common in kennels and doggy daycares. And it basically is just like a light mist with like a chlorine-based, I don't want to say it's, it's a chemical, but it's, it does disinfect and keep the the smell down of urine, and that would be cleaned throughout the day, and then at the end of the night, thorough cleaning. And like Cliff mentioned, the tiles are up off the pavement so that there is sufficient drainage and drying of the turf.
And the wishy-wash is also used for any of the toys or anything else, so.
And you can actually, you could actually use it, you could use it at your house. You could spray off your cutting boards if you wanted to, let it air dry. You could actually cut food and eat off of it, so it's not a toxic product that we're using. And like I said, the other doggy daycares around us are already using it, right here in Nashua. Let's see. Is there anything, I, I'm just, I'm sorry. You know, I get super nervous, but is there anything so far, any questions?
No, no. I, I, I think we appreciate, you know, certainly, your your testimony. I, I think if you think you've reached a good point with presenting your new information, what I'd like to do is actually open it up to the board to to questions if if you think you've you've been able to state everything you wish to state.
I think so. I know one of the other concerns was the the fire chief, who actually had looked over plans as well, and if I'm not mistaken, had approved both plans that that were submitted. So. And then it, obviously, the other piece, the one concerning piece was because we do have somebody that would be on site twenty-four seven. On the boarding piece, I know that they, that it was mentioned, I don't remember, she sat in between Mr. Green and Mr. Hirsch last week, two weeks ago, and was talking in regards to making sure that it was going to be suitable for us to actually be there for for what we were looking to do. And one of the questions concerns when we went back and reconfigured some of the numbers and so forth and looked it over, was that if if boarding is maintained at ten.
Oh, ten.
And then we had gone into, you know, during a, you know, a school vacation week or something, when a lot of people go away, you know, if we have nine people and then somebody comes in with two dogs, I have to, I have to turn them away. So we were hoping to say that we would like to be at that that twenty-five, thirty mark tops, but not have a limit necessarily on boarding, because whether it's a border or daycare, we have to max out at that anyway. And that that was our goal, is to make sure that that it stays at a proper number, that that is suitable for for everybody on the board as well as the communities.
Part of our commitment, like for the SBA to even get the application, even get the loan, we had to run numbers and things like that to, they want their money. Obviously, we have to pay the mortgage and pay them back. So limit, limiting us to only ten dogs that are peak time, I did, I ran the numbers, we would actually lose over a hundred, ten thousand dollars, just in those twelve weeks of being limited to ten dogs. And it's a small business. We got to get on our feet and be able to pay the bills and obviously make some money and profit to survive and pay our mortgage at home. And.
Yeah.
So it would really, that, that was, sorry, I forgot about that. So that was actually a really big, significant factor from a financial standpoint and aspect. I think that might be it.
I think that's everything. I just try to, try to be thorough, obviously, as much as possible.
No, and thank you for that. If you want to stay there for a few moments, I'll just pull the board here, see if we have a few follow-up questions for you. Any member of the board, Mr. Varley? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on the the point about the numbers, I did see in your, in your plan, the point about not wanting to limit the number of boarded dogs because of the financial impact. I understand that. We had discussed more generally last time, and I think you had indicated you were meantable to sort of a generalized cap of, I believe, twenty-five is what we talked about. Is is that still feasible, meaning that the total number of dogs, whether boarded or daycare, being twenty-five at any given time? Or is that?
Yes, we read those numbers strictly. Yep.
Okay.
That is correct. Thank you. Alderman, please.
Thank you. I actually have a question for you and staff. My question to staff is, if we approve this, and then some point down the road, they want to sell, all this approvals and so on go along with that, correct?
Correct. Unless they, you know, were to abandon the use, and say, for a couple years it sat vacant, then somebody wanted to move in with a doggy daycare, then they'd have to come back through the conditional use permit.
But if they sold it as a doggy daycare to another.
Right.
Group or another individual, all, all permits and so on would go along with that, correct?
Correct. And then the same, any conditions of approval that you would have put on here, like to cap it at, say, twenty-five dogs, thirty dogs, that's, we're going to do an administrative review and have that on the site plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to start with, I have two greyhounds, love dogs. And so saying that, I also know what two dogs can do and the the odor, and I have, I, I double bag everything constantly, and then when I pick up my trash and put it in, I'm like, whoa, I'm constantly spraying my, I'm doing Lysol, which is probably not as as good as some of the things that you would be using. But my concern is, I love your plan. I think you've thought everything through, and as you could tell, my concern is, what happens if you sell it and the next people aren't as good as you are? I don't want to hold you to their, to whether or not they're good or not. And I say this because I've spoken to a number of people who live next to these doggy daycare, and we have a number of them in Nashua, and one that won't be too, too far from where you be located. And the truth is, the neighbors are experiencing the barking and are are experiencing some of the odors and and so on. So that's. So that's my concern. In a residential area, I know the, the person that had sent us the memo, the letter, actually lives across the street. My two dogs don't bark. Some greyhounds bark a lot. I, I've had four, none of them, thank God, have, have barked or done anything that. But my neighbor's dogs are barking constantly. So I do understand that anybody could have a neighbor with three or four dogs, five dogs, and they could bark, so it's something we live with. But when I see twenty-five, I have a little bit of anxiety. You also said about staggering. Does that mean that you're going to set the time that they can drop the dog off? So you mentioned someone who's working in Boston, if you have ten people who have to get to work for seven-thirty, they're all gonna come at the same time. So that's not really staggering, that's, they're all coming, or are you gonna say, you come at seven, whatever times you set up? Six, six-fifteen, six-twenty, six-twenty-five?
So we, we actually have a software system called Time to Pet, and it actually allows them to go in. So when a time slot's actually been filled, no one else can actually pick up that time slot. So it actually will go through, so that if somebody says, hey, there's only three slots within this timeframe, once that's filled, then, then it, they actually will actually push them to, to another time slot in order to do so. It, it's just a piece for it.
The software's big, big for, for that, to keep everybody in check for, so they're, they can't, you have to log in and book the appointment, drop off or pickup.
Right, they would, but if they came a little earlier or something like that, is it something you would have a conversation with them and say, your time is this time, we don't want you?
Yeah, of course.
That would be your plan then, to do something like that? I will admit, I was not here at your last, but I, I've read the minutes and, and tried to familiarize myself with it. I think your plan is wonderful, please understand that. But I do have concerns, and when there's residential area in it, I, I walk my dog by a number of people who have doggy daycares. Some may or may not be licensed, I don't know. And just walking by, those dogs start to bark, and dogs who are in a pack, one can set off all the others. Again, I'm lucky enough to have dogs, and nothing sets them off, so I do know that they do exist.
We are also in a dog certified dog training program.
I read that, yes.
Yeah, and we also have mentors around us that are dog trainers, local groomers, I mean, we just, we have a good support system. And again, it goes back to the temperament testing, some breeds bark more than others. If it was a, like I said earlier, if it was a dog that just had an issue barking, they would be dismissed from the daycare.
I'd like to add to that as well, because this is really important. The, as you had mentioned, kind of the pack, their dogs do have that pack mentality, and when they are grouped together and so forth. And part of that is also the fact that we would only wanna be letting dog, you don't let out twenty dogs all at once, you just, you can't do that. So the, the way that it is set up would, would actually be let outs in small groups. So for example, if, you know, Michelle is inside with, with dogs and I'm outside, it would probably end up being anywhere between four to six dogs at a time that would be outside, in order to help maintain, you know, the...
Humanize the, the group altogether.
Exactly.
Thank you, appreciate that. And another question for staff, if, if that's okay?
Certainly.
I'm going, just running off at the mouth without, without asking. I apologize for that. Their plan is wonderful. If the next person came along and let twenty dogs out at the same time, that's not part of this approval process, is it, or is it? So when we're, when they're saying that they're only gonna let, they're only gonna have twenty-five dogs, they know that's the maximum, we've already done that. But they're also saying that they're gonna let five to six dogs out at a time. If the next people come in that possibly purchase this and let all twenty-five out, excuse me, that's not part of this approval, correct?
I mean, well, could it happen? Sure, I mean, it could. But I think that also at that point, if we had complaints, somebody came in, you know, to code enforcement, we'd have to take a look at it. I also know that environmental health had issued comments, so that if any issues came up, they would take a look at it. But also, there is a, a noise ordinance, I think, that regards to barking dogs for more than thirty minutes at a time can be considered a nuisance. So that would be another, another avenue. But I think if they were to sell it and another one were to come in and we started having issues, then it would be something that we'd have to either have code enforcement or, you know, have a conversation with them, you know, and if they're not in compliance, then we'd have to look at rebooking the conditional use permit.
Oh, thank you, that I do appreciate then, so.
We have another twenty years of work.
Okay.
We're in this for the long haul.
No, I appreciate it. I know people who, such as yourself, care for animals, care for animals, and it, it does become a whole lifelong thing. I, like I said, I, I rescue greyhounds, so I do understand that. I just have concerns for neighbors. I, I know having neighbors that just have a couple of dogs, so I can't imagine truly living next door to where there's always going to be dogs out. My, my neighbor's dogs are only out for a little while, and then they go away, and then they come back, and, but you would be doing ten minutes at a time, if I read that correctly. Ten minutes at a time, it could be five dogs, if you have twenty-five, that's an hour worth of...
In, in the obedience, you know, training is, is also part of barking. A lot of dogs bark for a lot of reasons, they're not trained properly. They're not being walked, they're not being exercised, they're bored, it's a lot of different reasons. So it really can be minimized with someone who's, knows what they're doing. And I'm not saying the neighbors don't, I mean, we have neighbors too that sometimes are like, do they not hear their dog? Like, I, I get it, and, and we get it, and, and I, I know that people don't know us personally, but, and on that, back to, back to your, the smell, you know, factor. I was a dental hygienist for thirty years, so I am like the sanitary queen. I'm just saying, like, like, I mean, I ran a dental facility in local public health, I mean, the, the rules and regulations there are like insane, but they're there for a reason. And the diaper genie is for, for, for babies, but it's genius for, we use it, we throw, you, you don't smell the poop.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Certainly. Other members of the board? Mr. Hudson, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank the applicants for providing the additional information, it's very helpful. I think we had a lot of questions that were unresolved, and I think you did a good job of being detailed and thorough in your response, and I appreciate that. Looking through the engineering comments and the responses, I don't, I don't, I don't take issue with anything, I think you provided what we needed, including the plan, and that, that certainly helps. I, I don't think we'll waive the traffic impact fee. I mean, the previous use to you was not the daycare, I do understand your position, but typically when a use goes out of, out of being used for a period of time, then you kind of, you get, a new, a new starting point gets set, you know, so. So I'm not inclined to waive the, the traffic fee, but other than that, I think we've satisfied the comments. I, if I read your business plan correctly, and please let me know if I don't, but it appears there's gonna be no pickups. Other than the case, maybe a dog's acting up, you gotta get him out of there, but no pickups or drop offs outside the hours of seven AM to seven PM. Cause that, that was something that I was very concerned about previously, you know, people coming in at eleven PM, picking up a dog, who knows, you know, so.
If their flight's delayed and they can't get there before seven, they gotta pick up the next day.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, because those hours fall within the noise, well, the normal hours for, for construction, outside of which, noise isn't allowed. So I appreciate that. If there is barking, it would be during that time, and, and as stated, there is an ordinance to, to the effect for, to deal with barking dogs. I do have concerns similar to Alderman Klee about just the general noise. I mean, you've testified pretty, pretty consistently and thoroughly that that's not gonna happen, so I appreciate that. And, and, and there is, there is similar uses like this in other neighborhoods. So I, I think it can be done correctly, so that it will work, but I do have those concerns, so. But, but, but given your plan and all the information provided, I, I think I'm satisfied with that, so thank, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other members of the board? Okay, seeing none at this time? I'm gonna open it up to the public, please, please grab a seat, thank you, thank you for your testimony. Are there any members in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Please come right up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
John Foley, twenty-five Broad Street, live across the street. Last time when we spoke, you brought up a couple of instances where there is other daycares, kennels close by, Zumies being one. They're not open on weekends, they only have fifteen dogs, no dog over thirty pounds. The other one is on Three Budway. Is everyone familiar with Three Budway is? Do you know where twenty-five Broad Street is? That reference was used by a Flight of a Crow. That is not driving distance. That operation is an eight thousand square foot industrial space. So the second one's disingenuous. The first one, Zumie, I can accept, but the second one, no. There's nothing to do with our neighborhood, so to use it for our neighborhood is wrong. And I just wanna talk about my neighborhood. Twenty-five dogs. Is the city gonna hold them to this? And if so, how? And as far as the noise complaints go, again, slightly disingenuous. We can call, they will arrive, but what's the protocol after that? If it's eleven o'clock at night, are you gonna call every single owner to get every single dog out? Cause we're not gonna be able to identify that particular dog that's creating that noise. Again, it's not these applicants, as the alderman had said. It's generally the unprotected decision you make for a neighborhood. And that's my concern. It's not the applicants. I actually do believe they try to do a great effort to it, but that's not my concern. They say they're gonna be here for twenty years, I'm at twenty-five Broad Street till I'm in a box. So the city has a responsibility to maintain this neighborhood. And this doesn't fit in it, and it's not, Zumies doesn't fit, they have fifteen complaints, we looked it up. They have fifteen noise complaints, spread over the years, they've had it. So it's, it's not a perfect spot for it. It's a great business plan, I don't disagree with that. I have dogs. They probably saw them if they drove, drove by. That's not my concern. It's always been the city's responsibility to make sure they protect this neighborhood. And I don't think it fits. Zumies doesn't fit, they've got noise complaints, but their conditions are so small compared to what they're saying. They don't even have, they're boarding Monday through Friday, they have no boarding over the weekend, no hours over the weekend. Budway doesn't even count, doesn't even count. Salty Claw does not count. It's in an industrial zone area, it's right next to the airport, and it's eight thousand square feet of industrial. So I don't think the city should use that as a consideration, that you've seen them in neighborhoods. So again, my concern is the future. And I know they have good intentions to stay the long term, life happens, we don't know. So that's my concern. How is the city gonna guarantee to protect the quality of life for the neighborhood? With potentially twenty-five dogs? And you say it carries over to the new person that sells it? I mean, is it in writing, is it law, is it guaranteed, is it, is it sueable if they go more than that? And how do we even know they go more than that? Do we get a clock counter and sit in our front yard and make sure it's only twenty-five dogs? And operations are hours from seven AM to seven PM, that means all dogs gotta be out by seven? We see what it's like over at the daycare. It's a mad rush, because they get banged for like twenty bucks when they're late. And that place lines up, and I don't have a problem with it, as again, I told them, it's a business. I have no problem between seven and seven. I don't even worry about the traffic. I don't think their traffic will be an issue, at all. It's after that, and it's before that. And it's a neighborhood. I don't know if you guys are familiar with twenty-five Broad Street, right in that little sweet spot, but it's more neighborhood than anything. So let's just try to remember that, and make sure that stays more preserved than a business that could, it could not be a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to the application? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. At this point, I'll give the applicant a chance to respond and provide any final thoughts.
Cliff Holzel, Three Bothside Drive, Nashville, Hampshire.
Certainly, thank you, yes.
And the, the secondary, just for confirmation, was actually Hudson K-9, which does, they do, they do boarding, they do daycare on site, which is point-two miles down the road as well. It's almost across the street from, from the other location directly. I, I just wanted to verify so that there was, you know, something for comparison to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board, or staff, or the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, go into deliberation. I, I appreciate Mr. Hudson's feedback on the engineering components, that there appears to be some degree of satisfaction there. I, I think, I think the applicant came back with a, a more complete understanding of, at least presented, from my understanding, of their business plan. But obviously, I'm interested in hearing what other members of, of the board think, especially to, this is the second time we've had a chance to see this one. Just wanna, you know, let, let me know what you think, your, your level of comfort. Do you think they've come back with enough information at this time? Anyone have any thoughts? Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I truly don't believe that I can support this, as much as I love being a dog owner and, and as one. I understand the importance of needing a, a doggy daycare and, and so on, but I too have concerns with the twenty-five dogs. I appreciate that they're going to be able to take care of the odor, which, which they have said. And, and I'm sorry about this, but twenty-five dogs is a lot to me, even if you're only letting five out at a time. You can hear dogs barking in a house if they were barking, and I understand that you have this training. I read your testimony from before, that you have a partner, someone who was kind of training you, and is a mentor, and so on. And I truly do appreciate all of that, but I just have these concerns of twenty-five dogs. And to the, the comment about we can call code enforcement, or we can call the police, because we have these ordinances. I can tell you, as an alderman, that when we call the police, that barking dog is not their priority. By the time they get there, that barking dog could have stopped. And in the meantime, the neighbors and so on are being harassed. So I truly feel that this, I can't say that this would devalue their home as, as the letter had, had mentioned, but I do think it will affect their quality of life. For that reason, I can't, I cannot approve this. I can tell you that the one that I know that's not too far from you may have only had fifteen formal complaints, but there have been knocks on their doors, the people that live in that area do feel harassed. And on the flip side of it, the people who own it are feeling harassed as well. They're doing the best that they can, and they feel the neighbors aren't being, but as we all know, having to live with something like that. So I, I cannot support this. And I understand that you have put a great plan together. I just look at it that maybe you will stick around for twenty years, but we don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring. And I can tell you personally, I never thought my life would be where it is today, so we don't see the future. So, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and I do feel guilty saying no, but...
Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so I guess first, I would just say generally, I, I do think, in my view, the, you know, the applicants have, have addressed the issues that we had identified during the prior discussion at the last meeting in a satisfactory way. And then, you know, more specifically, I just wanted to speak to the approval criteria that come from the ordinance as to, you know, the conditional use permit application that the, the applicant has made here. And so there's nine approval criteria, and when we go through the application materials and go through the, the testimony that's been given, I'm not seeing any failure to satisfy any of those nine criteria. I think the one that the abutter probably most... I think the one that the abutter probably most directly alluded to was, item five, which is the building structure or use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or budding uses in the area in which it's located. In my view, it, it's, it's a rare case in any application that that, that that's gonna be a sufficient factor to justify denial because it is, is fairly subjective. But here, we've got the additional factor of other, you know, similar uses already existing within a short distance from the proposed use. So I think it would be very difficult to conclude that it is incompatible with the neighborhood within the meaning of, of the ordinance. I certainly appreciate the concerns from the abutter in terms of, you know, the, the noise issue and, and, you know, the subsequent ownership. On the noise issue, I'd say we, we have a noise ordinance in the city that would apply and can be enforced. And, you know, this is not the only use that, that would be allowed either by right or conditionally in the zone that, that could have noise impacts. So, you know, in my view, that's not a, that's not a sufficient justification in and of itself. And then I would say, you know, to the extent that we want to impose specific limitations, we had talked about, you know, adding a condition to limit the number of dogs to twenty-five, as the applicant had agreed to, at any given time, we can include that as a condition of the approval, and that does then run with the approval. So that if, you know, these applicants were to transfer ownership, the new owners would be subject to that condition. And yes, it is enforceable as a matter of law by the city. So while I appreciate that there are some concerns about, you know, how this, this use will be operated, I have to look at this from the perspective of what are the approval criteria in the ordinance? And has the applicant met those approval criteria? And I think based on the discussion we've had and the testimony that's been presented, in my view, they do meet those criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Mr. Hirsch.
Mr. Chairman. The, the conditional use permits, section four, it will substantially devalue these budding properties. I feel that it will devalue the budding properties. It'll, you know, keep that, it'll, it'll bring down essentially the whole area because of the noise factor. Nothing else is a concern to me. So I, I think I'm gonna vote against it for that reason.
And I guess I would just, Mr. Hirsch, on what basis, how would we determine that it's gonna devalue surrounding properties? What, you know, what's the, what's the objective measure for that, right?
There is no objective measure. That's the problem.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I would say, have other houses in that neighborhood, you know, could we track that there's been an objective decline in values, you know, since the other facility has been in place? I don't know the answer to that question, but...
That kind of analysis is way beyond our, our scope here.
Well, but I mean, nobody has presented that, right? I mean,
No, that's for sure.
There's been an opportunity, and we don't have evidence before us. So I think, I think we need, we need to have more, in my view, in, in terms of evidence to justify that conclusion. Thank you. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I, I would kind of like to address, address this. And I too saw that four was the, and, and while I'm not a, a real estate agent, so value, but I can tell you, whether this be subjective or objective, because I don't have the actual numbers, I think anybody going to look at a home that might be for sale in the area and is hearing these, these dogs barking are going to say, what is all that noise from? And again, I appreciate that they've said that only five would be let out at a time, but I don't see in our approvals, the only thing that was brought up was that we would potentially limit it to twenty-five. We're not saying, and you can only let five out at a time. That's what they've, they've promised. And while I respect that, I still think there is the potential. And I have anxiety for that. And I, and I do feel that four is, and I do think even five, to be honest with you, I think it's detrimental to the, to the neighborhood. I do think that having something like this will affect the neighborhood. As I said, I, I have a, just myself, just a regular neighbor that just has a couple dogs that are, are barking every time they go out. Every time, from their home, every time someone walks by their house. I can't imagine having twenty-five dogs in a facility that you think are not going to be heard. And I understand that they're, that they're going to be as respectful and, and do as much as possible, but they've even said that they have to maintain a certain number in order to be able to make this profitable, in order to make it work. So while maybe we don't have numbers in front of us, I think common sense tells us that, that dog barking is going to affect a resale of a home, and that makes it potentially devalued.
Thank you, Alderman Cleese.
I would like to speak on number four as well.
Mr. Green.
I previously lived on eighty-two Amherst Street. Very loud area, you know, trucks come by all the time. I haven't seen property values drop in the last, you know, four or five years on that, and it's a constant area, same, it's the same general use zoning, zoning in that area. So I find it hard to say there's any facts that will devalue the property around it. So I just want to make that comment. And then with number... There's enough. That's it. Thank you.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, further, the criteria is to substantially adversely impact value, something to that effect. Yeah, substantially devalue a budding property. Doesn't even say that no devaluation, can't be any devaluation, right? I mean, the day, the dog daycare use is compatible with the residential uses in the sense that, you know, people have dogs, people need a place to have the dogs taken care of. This isn't a GI zone per the staff report. There's a lot of uses which would be much more objectionable at this location, permitted by right versus even conditional use at this location. So if the noise is controlled, I think we have no issue here. It's just a question of whether the noise is properly controlled. There are ordinances for that. So, so I think that's, at least in my own mind, there's been a lot of testimony that affected, to the fact that they will control noise. I would like to see some conditions though, as part of approval, you know, certainly for the total number of dogs, perhaps even for the, the, the upper limit of dogs allowed outside at any one time. The business plan states those hours I mentioned will pick up, drop off outside the hours of seven AM to seven PM. So I, I don't know if we need to pull pieces out of the business plan and make those stipulations. Maybe that's appropriate in an approval. Those are the key points, key points for me, to do the best job we can to ensure that, you know, it will coincide reasonably well in the neighborhood. So I, in, in any approval, you know, I'd be looking for some conditions like that to be included.
To, thank you, Mr. Hudson. I, I guess to Mr. Hudson's point, there's presently one condition recommended in the staff report that has to do with the, the traffic impact fee. If, if the board were to consider other conditions, I, I would just ask for some level of restraint. And what I mean by that is, I don't think this board has the authority or jurisdiction to supersede existing ordinances. We couldn't say you have to be eight decibels quieter than existing sound ordinance, or to try to constrict that time period. But it's not to say that the board can't think of other things, as Mr. Hudson alluded to. I, I just, I would, I would advise caution in, in trying to perhaps overly burden conditioning the use. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, but my, one concern with the number of dogs outside is just the space that they have available for, for that activity. I mean, if they take the dogs and walk them somewhere, okay, fine, that's, dogs are outside, but they're not running around in the fenced-in area. I mean, fenced-in area is smaller than probably this room here, if I, if I do my estimation of dimensions correctly. There was video, a link to a video, which was very interesting, that was provided as like an example of what they're trying to achieve here. You know, I didn't see more than five or six dogs outside at any time in that video, and that seemed fairly reasonable. You know, I, I'd be concerned if, you know, ten dogs are outside at any one time. The testimony was to the fact that that wouldn't occur. So that's really, really the issues I have, is just trying to put some reasonable bounds on their operation. Maybe stipulating some of the things that are in the business plan as conditional, so those carry with the property if it does change hands, somebody else, you know, buys into that use basically and continues the business.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Varley, please.
I might just make a suggestion in that regard, in terms of the conditions. You know, obviously, the applicant has spent a fair bit of time preparing, you know, the business plan that they described to us. And I'm thinking maybe to address the issue you're raising, Mr. Hudson, we could have a condition that would say, you know, the applicant will, you know, substantially comply with the provisions they've included in their business plan, which I think would give, give us, in the city, a little bit of leeway, not, not subject them to conditions that are beyond what they're already proposing to do, but then put some bounds around it in terms of, you know, what, what the standards would be for operation. You know, for example, we've talked about, you know, hours of operation normally on a site plan, you'd have that on the plan itself. We don't have that here, but if they, if we effectively adopted the business plan, we would include that.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? I think we're at the point where we're gonna be looking for, for a vote. Obviously, either in favor or opposition. There was some discussion, if anyone is willing to make a, make a recommendation in favor of approval, that we may want to add some additional language to the proposed conditions. But at this time, is any member of the board willing to, to make a motion on this application? Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to approve old business case number eight twenty-four dash zero zero four one. PKM Realty LLC owner proposed conditional use permit to allow for a dog daycare boarding facility. And that motion to approve would be with a finding that the, the plan does meet the requirements outlined in N O R, sorry, NRO section one ninety, one forty-six D, in the conditional use permit approval criteria, and that there would be three conditions. Number one is written in the staff report. Number two, a condition reading to the effect that the applicant would not have more than twenty-five dogs at the facility combined between daycare and boarding at any one time. And then a third condition that would read that the applicant would substantially comply in its operation with the business plan submitted to the planning staff and included as part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Is there a second on that motion? Second, Mr. Green. Discussion by the board. Mr. Hudson?
Do we consider the site plan markup that provided to be part of their business plan? I mean, how's that get incorporated into the record, so to speak? I mean, we, we said there is no site plan. They marked up a site, previous site plan. I just, I'm okay with fenced-in areas showing all that, but like, that's not specified in the thing. If they want to do something beyond, I wouldn't be okay with that. So that's, that's kind of why I'm asking. I kind of want them to be held to the site plan markup that they provided.
I guess with that being the case, Mr. Varley, would you be willing to amend your motion to address Mr. Hudson's comment?
I would. So, Mr. Hudson, if I were to amend my motion by adding a fourth stipulation that the applicant would adhere to the, the site plan diagram provided in terms of fencing, I think it's just basically the fencing, right? In terms of the, the fencing, and, and would comply with that markup, which would also be incorporated into the approval. Would that be satisfactory?
That works for me, yes. Thank you.
Then I would so amend my motion.
We need to second the amended motion? Is there a second, Mr. Green? Okay. Any further discussion on the matter? We've got a motion to approve with four stipulations. One is written in the staff report, and then the three additional added conditions that were, were just discussed with the board. So if there's no further discussion from the board, we can put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. There's two cases. One under old business conditional use permit, eight twenty-four dash zero zero six. And the second is, they're related under old business subdivision, or excuse me, old business site plan, case eight twenty-four dash zero zero five. Both relate to owner, JFC Real Estate, properties located at, by eighty-one, five seventy-nine, five ninety-three Amherst Street. If board is prepared to make a motion to accept jurisdiction, we would need to accept jurisdiction over each individually. But has any member had an opportunity to review the materials and is willing to make a motion with regard to board acceptance over cases eight twenty-four dash zero zero six and eight twenty-four dash zero zero five? Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that, having considered old business eight twenty-four dash zero zero six and old business site plan eight twenty-four dash zero zero five, that both applications are complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Zajak, you're here on behalf of the applicant. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua. Please bear with me tonight. I'm having a cough and attack as we're getting going, but I got my water ready just in case. With me here tonight is John Crowley of JFC Real Estate, the owner and applicant for the project, Attorney Brad Westgate from Weiner and Bennett, the project attorney, as well as Doug Raymore from Jewett Construction. They're the design build contractor for the project. We're here tonight seeking both conditional use permit and site plan approval for the proposed Best Ford Service Center project located at five seventy-nine and five ninety-three Amherst Street. Mr. Chair, I just have a fairly brief presentation, after which I, myself or the rest of the team would be happy to answer any questions from the board. Up on your screen is an aerial display plan showing the subject site, which includes two parcels highlighted in yellow, totaling about eighteen acres. So the larger parcel is known as Lot six twenty-seven. It's five seventy-nine Amherst Street. It's what you know as the existing Best Ford dealership. That lot itself is about sixteen acres. You can see it has rather unique geometry. It's got a lot of frontage up along Amherst Street. There's a roughly thirty-five thousand square foot building, which has both vehicle sales and service components to it, along with outdoor vehicle storage and display areas. The property then kind of necks down just right behind the building, and then opens back up along Pennachuck Brook. It's associated wetlands in the wooded buffer. So it's a little bit of a bowtie shape to it. The second lot is Lot one oh seven, five ninety-three Amherst Street, fully developed as the Uno's Restaurant, along with associated parking. That's about two acre site. And it's got a roughly six thousand square foot building, as I mentioned, along with associated parking and loading areas. Both sites were approved and constructed roughly at the same time, early to mid two thousands. Different owners at the time, JFC Real Estate, my client, purchased both lots, the Best Ford dealership lot, six twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-two, and the Uno's lot, Lot one oh seven and twenty-twenty-three. As you can see on the plan, direct abutters to the site, so we've got Pennachuck Brook, the Merrimack Town Line and land owned by Pennachuck Corporation to our north, Town Fair Tire and a number of other commercial properties to our west, Nimcore Drive and Assisted Living Facility and Commercial Assisted Living Facility and Commercial Properties to the east, and of course, Amherst Street and a good mix of commercial properties to our south. Topography of the site, I would consider mild to moderate, generally slopes in a northerly direction towards the wetlands and Pennachuck Brook. Grade certainly falls back off a little steeper in that back portion of the site that's wooded. Both sites kind of have separate and distinct onsite drainage and stormwater management systems, as I mentioned, was designed and constructed kind of in the early two thousand time period. They're both serviced by public sewer and water and contain generally well-drained sandy soils. As part of our survey efforts for this project, the wetlands were flagged in October of twenty twenty-three by the certified wetland scientist and surveyed by our office. There are numerous local and state buffers and setbacks associated with the brook, as you can imagine. So first, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty foot New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Shoreland Protection buffer. That is from the reference line of the brook. Then there's the seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer here in Nashua, associated with those, the wetland limit inside of Pennachuck Brook. Third, the site is located within the city of Nashua Water Supply Protection District, and if you're familiar with that map, so is a very large swath of the whole Amherst Street corridor. Within that Water Supply Protection District, there are provisions for a hundred fifty-foot conservation zone from wetlands associated with Pennachuck Brook, and that's what exists on this site. So those, within the conservation zone, the original project did have some limited development and disturbance within that buffer zone, but they did not impact or have any disturbance to the wooded seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer. That was the approach that they took with the original development of the Ford dealership, and as you'll see in a moment, we're following that similar approach with our project. You can also see on the map in orange, I tried to highlight the limited work of the project. So we're working entirely within the Uno's property and as well as a portion of the Best Ford property, certainly not all of the seventeen acres. So in terms of the proposed project, first, we're going to demolish the existing Uno's Restaurant building on Lot one oh seven parking lot, and then we're also going to demolish the existing employee parking lot behind Uno's that's located on the Best Ford dealership. If you follow my cursor on the screen, it's kind of that back parking lot there, used currently by Best Ford for employees, kind of overflow parking. What's being proposed is a one-story, roughly twenty-five thousand square foot service center building, along with associated parking, site and utility improvements. We're going to have similar access on Amherst Street on that Uno's parcel. There's two curb cuts now. There'll be two curb cuts after construction. We're leaving one on the westerly side, and we're slightly relocating the one on the easterly side to kind of help improve connectivity and access through the new site. You will also see that we're significantly improving connectivity, providing connectivity between the vehicle service center area and the Best Ford site proper. There really is no cross-access that exists there today. It's also worth noting that on the westerly side of the Uno's lot, there's an existing shared driveway. As you know, there's provisions in the land use code that speak to trying to provide connectivity between parcels to get them back to signalize intersections, and certainly that's the case here. There's easements that cover that. That shared driveway cuts behind the rear of Town Fair Tire. There's a car wash and a Starbucks, and it gets you back to the signal with Amherst Street and Selina Ave. And so that shared driveway exists today, and that will remain post-construction. In terms of parking, we are proposing a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven parking spaces on both lots. As you know, that does not include outdoor vehicle storage and display areas. Those are categorized in terms of parking count and ratios as, really as building area for those uses. And so in looking at the minimum and maximum, to give you an idea where we're landing, the minimum is two-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces for the combination of uses between the sites, with the maximum nearing seven hundred spaces. So coming in on that low end, certainly we're making a conscious effort to try to minimize our impervious coverage onsite and not to be overparked. As part of the project, we've got new curbing, sidewalks, landscaping, site lighting, public sewer and water extensions, as well as underground utilities to support the redevelopment. Important to note, the existing lots, it's intended that they will remain separate lots for financing purposes, but for all intents and purposes will function as one site. So those, we're not proposing to merge both sites, as sometimes happens in these kind of scenarios. A traffic memo was prepared and submitted by the project's traffic consultant. Their analysis showed that there was no material increase in traffic compared to the existing use. That memo and analysis was reviewed by Mr. Wayne Husband, and he did not have any further comments in that regard. Building design, I'll kind of give you the higher level notes, and certainly Doug from Jewett is here to kind of answer more detailed questions. What I put up on the screen is the detailed rendering that they prepared that was submitted to give you folks an idea of what the vehicle service center would look like. This is a perspective from our easterly curb cut on that former Uno's lot. So the building is one-story, about two-hundred-and-eighty feet long by eighty-eight feet deep, about twenty-five feet tall. It's a dedicated facility to accommodate the growing service function of the adjacent Best Ford building. As I mentioned, there is both a sales and service component to that existing dealership building. We're proposing twenty-two service bays right out of the gate. There are provisions for four future bays should business continue to grow. There is a small front entry, but it's important to note that this is not really intended to be a customer-facing building. It's going to be mostly utilized by staff, so customers would continue to enter into the existing dealership, and then their vehicles would be brought to this accessory building, I'll call it. I'm not sure if it meets the definition of accessory, but it's, again, intended to serve in that supporting fashion. Aesthetically, the facade will utilize low reflectance stucco embossed insulated metal panels for texture, as well as clear story windows to increase the natural light within the shop area. The roof will be pitched for drainage, and it's important to note that there will be no rooftop mounted mechanicals on top of the building. Silhouette and color palette, of course, are reflected of Ford's national branding, and is largely consistent with the adjacent facility. In terms of the site design and layout, I talked about the number of buffers that exist. So certainly, we spent a lot of time carefully considering the siting of the building and the parking, given those constraints, in an effort to minimize environmental impacts, land disturbance, utilize existing topography, soils, drainage patterns. We wanted to avoid any wetland or wetland buffer impacts, which we've done, as well as improve stormwater management compared to what's out onsite. Last but not least, we are seeking to continue the approach that the existing Ford dealership was granted in terms of redeveloping and developing portions of the hundred fifty-foot conservation zone, with, of course, a special attention to stormwater management and erosion control practices to ensure the watershed is protected. So I just wanted to speak a little bit more about kind of the conservation zone and the stormwater design update. So I'm going to kind of flip back and forth between two plans. So the plans that were submitted to the board and staff, planning board and staff, were dated back in January. It reflects a certain amount of conservation zone impact, a certain amount of parking in that area of the site. We've recently been to both the Conservation Commission on May seventh, and then back before the zoning board two nights ago, May fourteenth, and as part of that feedback, we've kind of pulled back our impact area and pulled back the parking. I and they would argue for the better. I haven't formally submitted those plans, but I at least wanted to present that to the board tonight to see kind of what those changes would look like. I hope you'll find that they're relatively minor in terms of the overall size and scope of the project. So as I mentioned, a conservation zone is part of the watershed protection. That's the focus, stormwater management and erosion control. I also mentioned there are portions of that impact area that are currently developed, including paved parking, drive aisles that were approved as part of the original Ford dealership project. As is written in the ordinance, section one ninety twenty-four F, any development or redevelopment of previously disturbed conservation zones require a special exception from the zoning board, which was granted two nights ago. I find that section myself a little bit clunky and confusing, so hopefully that's one of the areas that staff and the whole city will focus on as we move forward with a zoning rewrite, a code rewrite, but we're stuck with what we got for right now. So as I mentioned, the original January plans that were submitted included about twenty-six thousand square feet of conservation zone impact upon Lot six twenty-seven, and included a slight increase, about a thousand square feet of impervious area that we were increasing within that. That, those two pieces, we received feedback from both the Conservation Commission and the zoning board, seeking us to kind of pull back in those areas. So if you focus on the screen, on the master site plan, again, the area in green is that impact area. This is the January plan, twenty-six thousand square feet of impact, slight impervious increase within that green area. If I'm going to flip here, this is the new plan or the plan that will be submitted. It includes now about an eighteen percent reduction in the impact footprint. It's down to about twenty-one thousand. So we're pulling back in terms of tree clearing and overall footprint within that conservation zone. And maybe more importantly, we're reducing the impervious area. So we went from about a thousand square foot increase to a six thousand square foot decrease in impervious area. We eliminated about twenty parking spaces, associated drive aisles, the dumpster enclosure area. Again, now we can safely say we are pulling back in terms of what was there, what is there currently in terms of pavement within that conservation zone. And these were all things that we reviewed in detail with the Conservation Commission over two meetings and a site walk as part of their favorable recommendation. The other item to note is kind of getting in the weeds on stormwater management design. This project requires a New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit. As part of that, we learned that DES has updated their rules for Class A surface waters last fall, and so any project within a Class A surface water has to use a new state-of-the-art stormwater practice, which is essentially a lined surface bio-retention basin. We had previously proposed a bio-retention basin. Now it needs to be lined. I'll save you the details. There's a spec from UNH Stormwater Center. It's a state-of-the-art treatment that's been tested by them. It's essentially a science project in the back portion of the site, but for all intents and purposes will be the, kind of the highest bar in terms of qualitative treatment, which is important, given that we're near the watershed. So in terms of my overall presentation, I would ask the board, you know, in an effort to keep our permitting process and project schedule moving forward, that we consider to allow us to make these changes that I've just described in a more formal manner and working with staff, if the board considers action tonight. Lastly, I do want to mention again, as part of that watershed review, I'm sure you're familiar that any project within the overall watershed, the site plans and stormwater study are reviewed by Pennachuck Waterworks, being the stewards of the watershed. Pennachuck had actually reviewed our original design and provided a letter of approval. They will certainly be reviewing this revised design, but if they were comfortable with that one, I can safely say that they will be comfortable with the new design, given that higher bar that I mentioned. All right. I will stop talking about stormwater and the conservation zone. Mr. Chair, we do have the conditional use permit criteria. Again, this use, vehicle service center is allowed by conditional use in the GB zone. I did submit a letter dated January twenty-fourth, twenty-two, outlining how we feel we meet the nine criteria in one ninety one thirty-three F. I'd be happy to speak to any of those criteria points in detail, but I would just be asked that that be incorporated into the record and our testimony that we meet those nine criteria. As part of the site plan, we are asking for two waivers, again, a letter dated January twenty-fourth, twenty-two. The first is a fairly typical existing conditions waiver of adjacent properties, as well as a portion of the Best Ford property, the easterly side, that we are nowhere near touching or developing. We did not resurvey that piece, as it really has no impact in either the design review or construction of the project. I do want to speak a little bit more to the second waiver, which is a waiver of the non-residential building design standards. I know this is also a fairly common waiver, but I want to speak to some of those points in a little more detail. So the reason we're requesting that waiver, section one ninety one seventy-two, is due to the specific use and location of the building, as well as the restrictions brought on by the manufacturer. Strict conformity would also not be consistent with the neighborhood and would not add any architectural interest to the property. When compared to adjacent properties, the use, building siting, and exterior aesthetics are largely consistent with the neighboring sites. As you know, it's located on Amherst Street, which is a primary commercial roadway with complementary uses on both sides of the structure. While the building design does not, does require a waiver from the architectural standards, we have attempted to break up the front facade using color and vertical lines, as well as clear story windows. The building is sited as close as feasible to the street, and a robust planting plan also helps soften the front aesthetics. And I'm kind of referencing maybe more of the city's master plan vision for Amherst Street, and trying to make those incremental changes in terms of buildings closer to the street with some landscaping and trying to put, maybe focusing more of the parking in the back. I think we've kind of balanced that here. We do have some parking in the front, but the majority of our parking on that new area of the site is in the back. Colorways of the building are within the spirit of the ordinance with low reflectance neutral grays, accented by the bright primary Ford brand blue. The shaded colors help provide a sense of depth as well. Primary street-facing entrance utilizes a canopy structure, as I mentioned. It's not really intended to be a customer-focused building. The embossed panels on the facade will serve to provide texture and similar appearance to masonry, while maintaining the energy efficiency and durability of the metal paneling. Due to the fact that this building will not be customer-focused, there is only one main entrance provided, although pedestrian access from the street is still preserved. So, Mr. Chair, we believe granting this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the city's land use regulations, as the aim of section one ninety one seventy-two, due to the efforts previously noted by the team to really strike that balance between form, function, manufacture, and brand compliance. Mr. Chair, in wrapping up my presentation, testimony is we believe we comply with the CUP and site plan regulations and the spirit and intent of the National Land Use Ordinance. As I mentioned, we've spent some careful time and energy in terms of the siting of the overall building and the project, in an effort to minimize impacts to the buffers and other environmentally sensitive areas of the site. We certainly think this is a, this redevelopment is a great use for the property and one that fits well with the direct to butters and overall corridor. We did review the staff report, and the applicant is agreeable to the conditions. We also met with the engineering team a couple of months ago to go through their comments, and we're comfortable saying that we can address those to their satisfaction. The one condition I just wanted to maybe suggest be eliminated might be condition number five, having to do with a traffic corridor payment. We did get something from, in writing from Mr. Hudson, I'm sorry, Mr. Husband, confirming that no traffic corridor payment is being requested for this project. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll close on my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zajak. Questions from members of the board? Alderman, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that I-
I just wanted to confirm that I did hear correctly. The May 7th Conservation Commission meeting, they did approve with the provision that, if I have this right, there's a 1,000 square feet less. Is that correct?
Their condition was that we further pull back parking from what we presented to them, which is pulled back already from the plan that you see. So will be, from the plan that was submitted, it will result in a roughly 6,000 square foot reduction in impervious area, and we will pull back about 20 parking spaces from what's on the plan now, and that would satisfy their conditions.
Okay. And the zoning board basically had the same condition, is that correct? And that was the only thing that they had? I did read the Pennachuck letter, so, so the zoning board had a similar condition, or did they?
Yes. I haven't seen the actual approval letter, but typically those Conservation Commission stipulations get incorporated into that special exception approval.
Thank you.
And we would expect that to be the case here.
Thank you.
Other members of the board? Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff report says that no traffic letter was, or information received from the Traffic Department, but Wayne Husband actually had sent an email to staff on March 7th that basically noted the fact, as was testified, that the proposed use generates less traffic than the previous use, therefore no traffic contribution is necessary. Relative to the other engineering comments, we haven't seen these revised plans, but it sounds like the changes are fairly straightforward. In the engineering comments, there were no major or fatal flaws, I would say, so we'd be okay with conditional approval. There is a, was a question or an issue with a sewer service, just in that they were going to connect the sewer service from this parcel to the other parcel, and then that would, you know, go to the sewer main. That would require Board of Public Works approval, so that's something to work with the applicant on. Either modify it to directly connect to the main from that parcel or seek the Board of Public Works approval. So I think that's all I had. I'm comfortable with the conditional approval, based on the fact that I think we can satisfy the engineering comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Other members of the board? Okay. Seeing none? I don't think so, but I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or concern to this application? Nope. Anyone like to speak in favor of this application? No. All right. Seeing none. Any last questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing? No? All right. Well, I live fairly close to this area. I think that Ford, Ford personally, you don't even notice that they're there necessarily. You know what I mean by that? It's not a huge traffic generator. Having their own service bay, to me, seems like a logical, or an expanded service bay seems like a logical kind of upgrade from a business perspective. Understanding some of the constraints, particularly where they are environmentally with respect to the watershed, I think that they've followed sound practice here, and it seems like they're being asked to maybe go above and beyond a little bit what previous applications might have had to do. So I'm very, very comfortable with the information presented this evening, and I'm also very thankful that Mr. Hudson feels that the remaining issues from the engineering side can be worked out pretty handily, it seems. So my general thoughts on the matter, but obviously if other board members have thoughts, I'd love to hear them. Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you, and I agree with you on everything that you said. I think they're, they're meeting the requirements and, in some cases, kind of going above and beyond. I also like the fact that they're keeping that connectivity to keep some of the traffic from just trying to go in and out of Amherst Street. That's one of the things I think that the Planning Department and when we're redoing this recode that we're talking about, especially on the Amherst corridor, is to create that kind of backflow of traffic, to get people out to the signal and so on. So I'm glad they're going to continue that, and I see no problems with this application.
Thank you, Alderman Klee. Any other member of the board? Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like also note the landscaping plan. I appreciate taking time to put something into that and improve the corridor over there. It's important to, you know, really bring that incremental changes that you mentioned to the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Varley?
Just a quick question from Mr. Hudson, just to confirm that I heard you correctly. Did you say that we're not asking for a traffic impact contribution?
Yeah, that's correct. That stipulation can be removed.
So we can remove, yes. Thank you. Any other thoughts, discussion from the board? Okay. In that case, we'd be looking for a motion, two separate ones, actually. Maybe if we handle the conditional use matter first relating to case 824-006. Is any member of the board prepared to make a motion on the conditional use permit? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business 824-0006, conditional use permit for JFC Real Estate, with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in the conditional use approval criteria, section 190-133F, with no stipulations.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Varley to approve. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion?
Do we have to amend anything with the site plan for their later submission of the changes?
Not for the conditional use. I think that'll come up in the next one, so, thank you, Mr. Green. I appreciate that. Any further discussion on the matter? Put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Next, we'd be looking for a motion on case 824-005 regarding the site plan application. Is any member of the board prepared to make a recommendation on case 824-005?
And I think this gets to Mr. Green's question in terms of the additional changes to impervious service and parking to staff. I guess, you know, that's probably not within the, or maybe it is. Would that come within minor drafting corrections, or is there?
If we were probably going the other way, getting more impervious surface, it might be more of an impact, but this is an improvement from the others, and I believe we uploaded information first today on that. I suppose you could add a condition that the updated plans would apply for today, but I mean, I think you'd go under minor as well, whatever you feel would be appropriate.
Mr. Hudson, please.
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter, it's a matter of normal course that there's at least one or two planned revisions after we give a grant of conditional approval, as it goes through engineering review and that sort of thing. This may be more than others, will be some additional revisions because they're pulling the parking back, but I didn't hear that the building was changing. I didn't hear that the major features of the site were changing. So I don't know. If, as long as staff feels it's within the purview to continue forward with the changes and have the application still, approval still applied, then I don't know that we need to stipulate anything special.
And if any of those things you mentioned did occur, at that point, they'd be in a situation where they'd be coming back presumably.
Yeah, or, you know, maybe it would be determined that those were, could be improved administratively because they weren't, didn't, you know, significantly change or attach or anything. So I know that happens on occasion as well.
Yeah, we do have an engineering letter stipulation requirement. I know that particular issue was not addressed in the letter, but I think, to your point, we can address that in the context of the engineering review.
And I think also the ZBA, by emphasizing those changes through the Conservation Commission also.
Is the condition there, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you for the discussion on that. Is everybody okay and comfortable with that, if we're to move forward? Okay. In that case, I'll put it out there. Is any member of the board willing to make a recommendation regarding approval in this case? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business 824-005, site plan for JFC Real Estate LLC, and that with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section 190-146D, with a total of 10 conditions, eight being precedent conditions and two being subsequent conditions. The first precedent condition being a request for a waiver from section 190-279EE with respect to showing existing conditions, that shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two in the precedent conditions being a request for a waiver of NRO, section 190-172, with respect to architectural standards, will read as granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations three and four, reading is written in the staff report. Original stipulation number five being deleted. Stipulations six through nine being renumbered accordingly and reading is written in the staff report. And then subsequent conditions one through, one and two, reading is written in the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Varley. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? Put it to a vote, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Moving along in the agenda, other business, review of tentative agenda to determine projects of regional impact. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review potential listed projects and is willing to make a motion regarding regional impact? Let me just check one thing. Where is, those do may have? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed the tentative agenda, I would make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Varley. Is there a second on that? Second, Alderman Klee? Any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any final, final thoughts? Did you want to talk about June 6th at all, or should we let everybody read about it on Facebook and online? There's a particular application that's coming back for their one-year renewals? Is that, or is that, did I get the date right?
Yep, you got it right. We haven't set the agenda yet. We'll be doing that next week, but we, it looks like, right now, it looks like we're going to have a pretty full agenda. Two of the items on there are extensions, one's for a subdivision and one's for a site plan extension. For 145 through 149 Temple Street, due to the ongoing litigation of the asphalt plant, they're asking for an extension for the site plan and the subdivision that was proved last year, but it's not the asphalt plant. I'm sure once the signs go up, we might get some questions about it, and if anybody needs to recuse themselves for those, just to let us know so we make sure we have a quorum.
I probably won't be here on that date, but, yeah.
Not to get too bogged down in the details, but the board may recall, we did approve, there were basically three applications, correct? Subdivision, site plan, and then the, I don't know, if you want to call it the big one. Two of the three were actually approved, so we're coming up on their one-year extension. So I'm just putting that out there because there may be a lot of things potentially published based on last year, but it is, it is basically our typical extension process. So just wanted to put it out there. What I really should have said was just make sure you come early and get a parking space.
Yes.
But, but yeah, that was, that was all I had. I don't know if anybody had anything else here before we shut things down, but, no? All right. I guess I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Klee?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned at 8:46.